Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
Any adjustments to the agenda? Acceptance minutes of the meeting of September 9th.
Moved the minutes of September 9th as printed. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to accept the minutes of the meeting of September 9th as printed. Any discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Four in favor and Toby abstains because she was not present. Communications and public comments. Oh, you know what I forgot to say, sorry. If you're attending by Zoom and you want to participate, please just unmute your mic, ask to be recognized, and please state your name too, please. Okay, comments. Let's move on to unfinished business, the Savage gravel pit. Update if any.
Yep, we have met as a committee. It is our general recommendation not to purchase the gravel pit due to the numbers and the results that we got from the ground from the core testing, if you will. We've lost a lot of the years that we had planned on getting from it. I was actually quite a lot in favor of it, and I'm going to say so because at the time we were looking at possibly, oh, I guess, we were looking at possibly using that building as in the future as a town shed, but that's be that it is a stick-built building, it's not really going to meet our needs for that. So for the amount of money that's invested in it, we did not feel that it's a good purchase at this time for the town.
Thank you for doing that, Sheldon.
We, so how, just so we can notify Mr. Savage, we're going to send a letter, call him, or who's going to call him, and who's going to do what? And do we need to actually take a vote that the board actually? He's a committee coming to us, and I'm not saying I disagree with him all.
Right, I understand, yes.
Right, should we not at least pass a motion that as a board, we decide not to?
I think we should.
I think it would be a great idea, and then I think we should write a letter for sure. Probably call him too, but also depending on his decision, so.
As long as we write a letter, I talk to him every day, to be honest with you. So I'll tell him, because I told him I would talk to him afterwards.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
That's what I said, I'd rather have the letter come from the board, but just so he knows. So.
So, do you want to make the motion, Sheldon?
You make the draft.
Yeah, you, you make the motion anyway, so. That we do. You're going to make a motion as a board so that we can?
I would make a motion to not purchase the Savage gravel pit in Rockingham.
I will second it.
Moved. Kevin. It's been moved and segmented not to purchase a Savage gravel pit in Rockingham. Is there any discussion, more discussion?
We will follow it up with a letter to Mr. Savage, thanking him for the chance to purchase it, and.
Can we have a little more discussion, because I just happen to know this person? To give him a, we must state why we didn't purchase it. Only reason is if it's dead, if that person comes back and says, well, I'll take less for, are we back on the table? I don't think we are, I think we just say, because what we look at for that price, we're not purchasing it. Is that correct? And if the letter said that, for that price, we're not purchasing, it's done with it.
Right.
But it does, let me, if the person came back and said, well, would you buy it for 300, I guess we'd be back. That's why I'm saying if you state why we didn't buy it, it's too much money for what we're going to get.
For what we're going to get out of it in a matter of time.
Right, there's less material than we thought at first. I mean, that's, that's why we pursued it in the first place, yeah.
If I was him, I would ask that, well, would you pay less for it? You know what I'm saying? So I think if we gave him that reason, the reason why we're not buying it, because it's too much money for what is there, that.
Which is what the letter to them, to him will say anyway.
Yeah, okay.
The question is, would it ever, would it ever be?
Viable.
Viable, would we ever want it because of the potential that it has at any price?
I think by the time we tear down the house and tear down the building that are there to get to the gravel that's underneath them, it would be cost prohibitive for what we're going to, what we'd be getting out of it.
So we are assuming that indeed it's, it's a done deal, we're not buying that property.
Not for 600,000.
Yeah, well.
Right.
And that's, he goes back to the same thing, yeah. There's a reason why we're not paying for it. If, if we were sitting and they came back and said for 50,000, I'd think we would be seriously looking at it.
We'd look at it again, right?
Exactly. So that's, to be fair to this person, we just say for the other price, what it is, it's just not worth us pursuing it right now.
Okay.
Okay, let's take a vote on that, Ben.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of the motion. I opposed. Motion passes, and thank you Sheldon and Craig for your work on that. Appreciate it. Town reappraisal. Option.
We should have Ed Plowett on the line.
I am here.
Welcome, Ed.
Thank you.
So in your packets, you have his initial letter that we had last week, and he also gave us a chart, and he's on Zoom for you to explain what his thoughts are with his chart and benefit Westminster. Ed?
Yeah, thanks, Russ. You know, I sort of started off looking at the equalization for the towns that we, that we work with, and what kind of stood out from all the places I looked at, that Westminster had a coefficient dispersion of 19.81. So what that means is that it's one of the measures that the state considers when they force a town to complete a reappraisal. So a coefficient dispersion is a measure of uniformity. It measures the disparity between the assessed values and the sale prices. So when it gets above 20, they get their big stick out and they require a town to complete a reappraisal. So at 19.81, we're, we are sort of pretty close to being under orders to complete a reappraisal. So I believe that the last one was completed for Westminster in, I think it was 2014. Is that sound about right, Russ?
2013, yes.
13, okay. Yeah. So it's, you know, it's been a few years, but it hasn't been an inordinate amount of time that has gone by. And so the chart that I gave you sort of helps explain where some of the problems lie with this. And the top chart is a, you see the measures of average and median and the aggregate COD and the sales. This is actually the equalization done by the state by category. R1 is residential, less than six acres, R2 is residential, more than six acres, mobile homes landed, commercial, and you have two land categories of wood and miscellaneous. So for the sake of argument, let's just take a look at the AGG or the aggregate, which I think is probably the best indication of where the, where the relative values of the assessed values relative to the sale prices, what those, what those ratios are. So the, you know, the R1s and the R2s, those residential categories really aren't that bad, but they have sort of a high coefficient of dispersion. So the common level, you know, the percentage of ratio of assessed value and sale price, don't know, they're 1% or 2% below market value. But on average, they may be 15 to 20% up or down from the sales. So on average, the number's okay, but the disparity is, is getting kind of, kind of far apart. Let's go look down at the mobile home. So we were a little bit less than, than our common level for the residential, but our mobile home landed category, we're almost 5% above market value. And again, a coefficient dispersion of 21, and there are six sales that are there. So it's a fairly good, you know, representation of that, that that category is being over, is being over appraised right now. And then we go down to the commercial category. So there are only four sales there, but if you look at the aggregate ratio, they're being assessed at 50% of market value with a coefficient dispersion of 27. So I think we start to get the idea that the average overall numbers kind of fall in, because your CLA was, as you see at the bottom, and they're 98.06. So that number's not so bad, but that coefficient dispersion of 19.81 indicates that there's a fair amount of disparity or inequity built into the grand list. And so let's just go down to the next little box. And so these are, this represents the numbers by class, residential class, commercial class, and then the miscellaneous or the land class. So it's a sort of an aggregation, if you will, of those sales and those categories. And again, you know, the residential's at 99 for all the types, mobile homes, R1s, R2s, F1s, F2s, COD of almost 19, so it's getting a little bit of a spread there. Commercials, the same for sale, at 56 for, for a common level, and the miscellaneous category, which is the woodland and just the raw land, we're at 111, almost 112, being over assessed for those 10 sales with COD of almost 27. So I, I think you start to catch on that there is just some inequity that's built in, and there's some categories that are just not really being assessed in a manner that they probably should be. So if you just take a look at the next box down, you know, the low ratio for commercials was 40% of market value, and the high was 81% of market value. And then go look at the land category, miscellaneous, the low was 86%, and one property was at 211% of market value. So that's the kind of indication you can see that where that disparity comes in is what that coefficient dispersion really represents. So then I took a look at the current sales. So this equalization that the state did ran from sales from 2017 to, to last April, and so the current sales run from 2018 to this, to this past April. And so you see, the aggregate went down a little bit to 95% from the 99 of the residential category. So what that tells us is that the market values are actually increasing, and the coefficient of dispersion dropped, you know, one, maybe a couple of points, which I think is good news. And then the commercials, we dropped off one sale, and so now we're at 59% versus 56%, with the COD is still 22. So the happening is that the recent increase in the values and the market values, and if you've tried to buy any properties recently, I've been talking to my daughter, and I tell you why, you can't put a bid in fast enough. They just, they just go as quick as you can, as you can make the phone call. And so we're seeing a real increase in, in terms of value. You know, I, if you are in central Vermont, I think you're seeing the same thing in your area as well. So I think my first concern was, when I saw the 19.81, that by next year, Westminster's going to be under orders for reappraisal. And that takes away, what it means is it takes away some of the option. It means that you could not do an update versus a full reappraisal. Because then once the state got involved with, with putting in a mandate that a complete full reappraisal be completed, and the difference is just, you know, it's quite frankly, it's time and cost is really what it amounts to. So my, my original concern was that thought that something we could possibly consider is doing an update rather than a full reappraisal. I guess say the big difference is in costs, if you probably do that in one year, and an update would require putting in new schedules, land schedules, depreciation, new cost tables, and then going and taking a reexamination of the sales and developing a new land schedule, and then go review, drive by all the properties, and recalibrate all the values for all the properties using the new set of tables to work with. So it does not require remeasurements, doesn't require any interior inspections, it's literally just driving by the parcels and seeing what's there. Versus the full reappraisal, which would be going out and remeasuring, retaking pictures, doing appointments of some matter, whether it be an interview or a video tour of a building, or maybe at some point in, in the near future, we can actually do interior inspections, but that's a very costly and time-consuming proposition that would take two years and much more money. So I, I started looking at some of the data, the tables that are put in place, and, you know, some of the issues besides the coefficient dispersions, I, I just think that the land tables are just not working for you anymore. What was put in place is not working. Quite frankly, I think that the land schedule was a little too low. You may think that's kind of funny, given that, that you're over praising the land, but what they did was they had a factor table that they used to allow the, the values to be increased. So that was based upon a neighborhood factor, and those factor tables were one and a half, two, two and a half, three, you know, one and a quarter, and that allowed them to get the values up for some of those neighborhoods. And I think it just, what was put in place at the time just doesn't work, it's not working for you now. I, I found a little bit of a, I think it's a glitch in the land schedule. They set the same base rate for all the lots that are, as a base, that are less than an acre at 25,000. So whether it was 0.25 acres or 0.75 acres, they hit to the flat rate base of 25,000 for that. And then that was then indexed up by whatever factor was being used for that neighborhood. So that's a process that personally I wouldn't like to see continued, but that's what, that's what was done at the time. You know, something about the sketches, they, for the multiple-story sketches, they used a one and a half factor for the one and a half-story houses. I suspect that there are some houses that are probably more than a 1.5 base, above the base, but you know, in, in the end, it doesn't, it's not a big difference in terms of the square footage, just, you know, 5% or so. But anyway, I wouldn't have liked, I wouldn't have done that either, but, so, and we know that the commercials are under assessed, and that the mobile homes are over assessed. So the quick and less expensive fix is to, you know, do an update, and the, probably in time-consuming, and then more, in the long run, probably more accurate, is to do a full-blown reappraisal. So one would be a one year as the, as the update, and then a full reappraisal would be two years. So now then, the good news is, I think with the increasing market, I don't think you'll get put under orders next year. I don't. As I look at those sales, I mean, you're going to be close, but I don't see it bumping over the 20%, which is what, what it requires, you know, a reappraisal. So, you know, just a sort of an opportunity to kind of tell you where your grand list is and where some of the deficiencies and the highs and the lows are. I'm open to answer any, it's a lot of numbers, and I'm sort of a numbers guy, and I apologize for that, but if I could answer any questions for you, I'll certainly try to do them.
I have a comment from the listeners. They have been very frustrated with just what you said, land values versus residential values that are, have been sold and updated, et cetera. They would like to see a fresh start, get a full appraisal, and give them a, a fresh start. That's just what they asked me to tell you.
Hey, Ed.
Yeah.
Kevin Hughes, thank you very much for all your, yeah, thank you for all your fine work and time and explanation. The, the coefficient dispersment number of 20. If you do a partial, does that absolutely, are you certain that's going to foreclose the need to do a full reappraisal? Or we still be, even if we did that, we still could face a full reappraisal, given how strong the market is?
Well, what would happen is, Kevin, is that when we, if we were going to do an update, we would put new, all new systems in place, new land schedules, new time-location factor, new cost tables, new depreciation schedules, and sort of recalibrate everything to the market, so that, that coefficient dispersion would, would come down to, you know, 10 or less.
Okay, thank you very much.
All, all it would do, it would, it would buy you time, it would buy you a few years, because I, I think, you know, what we're seeing is that there's some, basically some errors in some of the data that's there. So it would buy you a few years, is what it would do. Is a full, is a full reappraisal better? Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Question to Russell. When, 2013, does that put us back to our listener that is no longer with us, or listeners that are no longer with us?
That's, that's correct. That was our last appraisal.
Which is where some of these errors originated, and we knew we were going to, back then, we knew we were going to have hiccups from what was done in 2013.
That's correct.
Okay.
Ed, let me ask a question of, just before 2000, I'm trying to go back in memory, but we did a town-wide plan and changed a lot in our zoning, so that we changed a lot of the town from three-acre lots to five-acre lots. Is there a separation now, we've been there long enough, that, did it add value to lots that we weren't thinking of, or devalue the other lots? Is there, do they ever look at separation by the zoning?
I don't, I don't think anybody's ever looked at that, Craig, to tell you the truth. I don't know what the overall impact that is. Part of it is because, you know, we're required to do a house site value of two acres and less, and we don't, and that for that non-site land, that beyond two acres, you know, we don't hit that very heavy in terms of overall value per acre, because it's not going, it's not going to be a developed portion. So I, I, I'm not sure what your reasoning was to go from three to five acres, but I don't, I don't see what the impact of that was at this point in time, to tell you the truth. I haven't really looked at it hard, though.
We were trying to slow development down. We were developing too fast. Obviously, we don't have that problem today, but that was what the reason was, was sort of clustering so many homes that make them a little more separate. But you always wonder if you're going out to sell your land and you got 11 acres, is your property worth more than somebody who only has nine acres and can't subdivide it? That's all we were talking about, so.
Yeah, well, you know, it probably, people do, do consider that, no doubt. I'm sure they do.
So an update would, or a full appraisal would not only bring our property values more into line, but it would correct these errors from times past, and that would, getting us a fresh start would, I'm just thinking, would, that would serve us well for far into the future, I guess is what I want to say.
You know, I, I, even, you know, for the past 35 years, even in my days back when I was at PVR, I think something that was not utilized enough for a lot of towns was to do a full reappraisal, get a nice clean slate to work off of, let that keep the, the data up, and then maybe in five years or six years or so, then do an update at, you know, a much reduced price. And again, that would then, you know, last another five to seven years, so you've gone to then a 10 to 12, 15-year span, and you've got really pretty good numbers. Because you know what the impact of the common level is, that becomes the divisor for the education tax rate. So if it's less than one, it actually, that, that rate goes above one, the tax rate goes, goes higher. So that's for some towns, why they like to keep their values right at 100%. And then the dispersion issues are, they're just, that's just inequity across the grand list. You know, changes in the market, changes in the classes and types of properties, changes in what people like and what they don't like about, about value, about different kinds of properties. So I've often thought that if you got a good clean slate to work off of, then you can save yourself some money down the road. I, I think in, in our case now with Westminster, I think our, I think our slate's a little, little cloud, it's got too much dust on it, I think.
And do we have an idea of what the update would cost us versus a full appraisal, roughly?
You know, I, you know, our full, our full projects right now are doing, we're doing about $100 a parcel, so in your case, it'd be about 156. You know, an update would be about 86, probably, 86, it'd be, it'd be under 90.
What was that first number you had?
156 would be $100 a parcel.
156, so you said.
And then about 86 for, you know, for an update.
Yeah.
So both would, you'd hire outside people to do both?
Well, we, never, we would do it. Our staff would do it.
The update or the full reappraisal, or both?
Both. You know, every year, this past year, we, we finished 10 reappraisals, and we did two of those, 10 were updates, then the other eight were full reappraisal.
In 2013, when we did it, by the time we got it done, we found out that if we had didn't, if we hadn't did nothing, we would have been okay, because the next year it'd drop. So we still always have that in mind, that, but I guess I'm kind of agreeing with you, if the economy is soaring up, we're heading in a bad direction if we're going to look at that, I guess. But it seems like those were less expensive rates, because I think last time we were looking at it, it was like 200,000 when it was bad, was here for us to hire an outside person. I'm kind of surprised that rate didn't seem that high.
Well, 200,000 would have been a lot of money back in, back in 2013, in my opinion. Back in those days, we were doing them for 85 dollars a parcel, 75 dollars a parcel.
Ed, one, this can be a good one. One quick question. On the full appraisal, you said you're going to need access, let's say on the residential house side for appraisals, correct? I heard you correctly?
Say that again, Kevin, I did not, you cut out.
Uh, to, to do the full reappraisal, you'll need access, you'll need access to residential homes, correct?
Yeah, as, as good as we can, yeah. You know.
And with a, a town our size, how many, how many samples would you, you think you'd need?
Well, we would go to every property, obviously, and remeasure everything, and retake pictures, and, and, and talk to people. So I'd go into places that people want us to come through, and.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I, I'm just thinking out loud here, I'm not trying to muck up the works, I'm just thinking, since we're still in the midst of COVID, have you had any, you know, how, how has that process been for you as far as access for people and their demeanor?
Well, what we've been, we've changed our approach a little bit, Kevin. So rather than necessarily going through, walking through a house, now we're having pretty lengthy interviews with people, and we have, we developed a process called online property data verification. And so what we do is we give the people a special code, secret code, if you will, and then we upload our data once we get it completed up to our servers, and they can go in and actually look at their data, they'll look at their sketch, look at their picture, look at some of their data, and then send it, verify that data with us, and send us back a note if they think it's right or wrong. So we've been, we've been doing that for like the past year, year and two, and we've also developed a set of protocols for interviews with people. So here's a series of questions. So here's a series of questions that we try to go over with people, what's been improved, you know, what's their finished basement area, when was the house built, things along those lines, what type of kitchen do you have? And then we can also, we're at the process now that we're, we have a mechanism, we're just starting it, this week in fact, that we have a way for people to do a record, not a recording, but a live video of their property with us being outside. The camera that they can walk through the house with and we can look at our screen and see what's there. So that way we don't have to go in. So, you know, the day, the old days are gone, I'm afraid. I don't know how it's going to be post-COVID, I just don't know. But, so we're trying to think of some ways that we can continue to get good information and good data. And quite frankly, I can pretty much tell you what's in a house from the outside and those things that determine quality, most of those things are really from, you know, the configuration of the house, the windows and the doors, the type of roof line, the size of the prop. I mean, those are the good indications of what the quality of that property is going to be. Is it perfect? No, but it's, it's pretty close, to tell you the truth.
Still very innovative. Thank you very much.
Any more questions for Ed?
Another one for Russell. How much do we have in our fund for reappraisals?
I'm not positive. I did not look at this, Ed. I will.
It's your pleasure. Do you want to research a little more, think about it for another, until another meeting? Take it up in the next one? Find out how much we have in that fund?
We spent many years taking pictures and going back and following, putting all this information. So now all of a sudden it comes along and says.
Comes along and says basically that it's, they're going to start over again. So I'll let, either we, so I guess maybe that's the way we started, start over. But I thought this whole time we were taking pictures and write up so that at least some of the homes they wouldn't have to go to because we just did them. You know what I'm saying? But, I don't know.
I think we, Craig, we have to look at them through the same set of eyes. That's really what it amounts to. That's where you get, that's where the equity issue comes in in terms of that coefficient dispersion.
You know, Ed, I'll agree with you a hundred because that was what we had a lot of people upset with. Was one is, when we got done that 2013, I walked away thinking, we'll never ever do this again ourselves. People were upset because they knew the people too well that were coming to the house and there wasn't always the same people, so people had different eyes and different evaluation. And when I got done that one, I was thinking, if we ever do this again, we're going to hire somebody to come in and do the whole thing. And then that, they protect us, basically. It's one company that's doing the whole town. I like that idea.
Well, if I could just add one other thing, not to hold you guys up, I know you've got more things to cover. But we do our reappraisal, you know, we do all of our inspections and get our data in and analyze the sales and get our numbers and stuff. And then we still do that full field review, drive by everything again. And then we do a full in-house paper review two times. And, and we're really looking to make sure that things are relative to the sale and that there's equity across the board. So it's sort of a three-phase quality control review process that we do. And I, all I can tell you is that I've been doing this reappraisals for 30 years and that that process seems to work. It's very time consuming, expensive for us, but we just don't have a whole lot of appeal, to tell you the truth. We just, I think people see the equity. That's what my thought is anyway. So, you know, I'm not trying to, my goal tonight was just to give you some information and be here as a resource for you to help you make a decision about things. And, you know, that's going to continue. If you have more questions about things, Russ knows how to get ahold of me. You know, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you come up with.
Thank you, Ed. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Sure, but as a board, shouldn't we be asking Russ to come back to us with the answer to the question, how much? And then those were kind of ballparked that we actually would get a written estimate from his, from him. He was just throwing 150 out, that we actually would get a written estimate of what this actually would cost.
Can you get us a written estimate, Ed?
I could. I could do that, sure.
We need to discuss it on the next budget anyway. Thanks, Ed. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah, I think the reappraisal fund is probably in our audit anyway, but yeah, Russ, if you could.
Do that.
1,000 or something.
One last question, Ed. You there?
Sure, sure am.
Yeah. How long does this take? So does it ever lap into two fiscal years? You started with one and then if we were to carry money from two different fiscal years? Is, from the time you start with the contract to pay you to the time we finish, how long, how long a period of time is that?
It'd take two years. You start like in July, maybe two years, two years later.
Okay, so we'd be spreading that bill out for two or three fiscal years. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll take that up in the next meeting. Petition signatures for allocations update.
In your packet, you have another letter that Patty Mark bought from Will Sennings. It is up to you as the select board whether you are going to require petitions for the social service agencies. You can replace the requests on your warning at your acceptance. They can't be increased from what they allocated the past year, but you can do that yourself. And Will has, has given you that decision in his letter to Patty. So we need an answer. The people are getting a little antsy about getting signatures. They need an answer. So we're sending out letters to all of the appropriation folks and we, we in the office need an answer. So I would like a vote tonight to how to proceed.
I just wish, you know, the people running for office.
I can't hear you.
People, people running for office, state office or whatever, now do not have to get signatures to, during this COVID period. So anybody who wanted to run for office where you need 100 signatures, you didn't need any signatures. And I think that, you know, if it's done that way in that situation, we ought to try to use the same.
Why don't we ask, can we ask them to send a request in? Because it does, it does leave it up to us to determine how much. So I can come and think of a group that asks for more, but they never get it. So then we can at least say, okay, here's the amount that we, as a select board, will put in.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
That's fine, yeah, but not with.
But they would not be on the ballot for more than they got last year, no matter what.
But the question was, right, but they came and solicited and said, I want more. It says we have a right to grant them more, if I'm reading it right.
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have the letter in my packet, but yeah.
So we're going to get requests like that, right?
Yeah, so what are you asking? That they send us a letter?
Telling us that they want the same amount and, or they want more, then we would decide as a select board.
Right, I'm assuming that.
Right.
Yeah, they don't just wait until it's time to.
Correct.
You know, send them the articles, so, yeah.
We have seven allocations that are still needing the three years to be permanently on our warning. So there's seven different letters to be sent out, but we can definitely do that.
Yeah.
That's what you want.
I would certainly be in favor of waiving signatures for this year only, yeah.
But it leaves us.
Right, but with.
I wouldn't want to be cut off guard that if somebody was asking for 3,000 and this is their second year, but all of a sudden, oh, ask his landlord for 9,000 and then we automatically grant it to them. We just basically look at each one and say, yeah, it's the same, give it to them.
What date should they, we require they have their letters in by? Same time as the signatures?
The other, no, it's got to be sooner than that.
Right, so.
So we'll determine that by going backwards on the calendar.
Okay.
It will be relatively short time.
Question. If we waive the signatures this year, what happens to each one of these groups next year? Are we going to go back? Are we going to basically disallow this year and say, okay, you need, you know, signatures for five years or three, whatever, how many years? Or are we going to just say, because of the COVID-19, you didn't need signatures this year? And so, but next year you will, but you can, you know, I just.
But Sheldon, the clarification is they still have to be voted to pass. So my personal feeling is if this is the third year and we give it to them and it passes, it's the same as if they had signatures. It's still going to be voted on the floor to pass it.
Right. It's really just a matter of getting on the ballot.
Right, exactly. It's just a matter of not having signatures to come back. But, you know, if all of a sudden it's the third time it gets voted down, now they got to start over again anyways, you know? Because it isn't like we're actually giving them, we're just allowing them to not have to have signatures.
Do you have another question about that, Sheldon?
No.
Well, I guess we probably need a motion for that. Please, yes, okay.
Not sure what we're making. I'll make a motion that we ask the people with the articles to come with a request to the select board for the next meeting so that we can vote on the grandam a non-signature petition to be on the articles.
We'll waive the requirement.
Waive the requirement, okay.
For signatures for this year only.
Yeah. And I think I slaughtered that, that language, but.
Yeah, okay. You went backside too. So I think the motion is that we will waive the requirement for getting signatures for the ballot for this year only and that the.
We would have to, what we're requesting them to send a request in.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And they would be required to, those who wanted to get on the request allocation to be put on the ballot, would send a letter to the select board at a date that Russ will determine. So the select board can decide on the amount that will go on the ballot.
We might. So isn't that, in that motion, are we, are we automatically granting the people who are, what Toby just said, running for reelection, or are they just automatically allowed to do it?
Yeah, they're automatically allowed to do it.
So they don't need permission at all from the select board not to have it because they automatically do it? It's just the articles are the only ones that have to have a dollar amount?
Just the allocations, just the allocation.
Yeah, the articles, the.
I would want whoever wanted to run to know that, that's all.
So we have a motion? Did you second?
I did.
And moved and seconded? Is there more? Is it clear what we're voting on? Are we, yeah. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Draft a new personnel policy. Craig and Kevin.
We're working on it. We're gaining. Yeah, we're gaining.
I understand you've been doing quite a bit of work on it, so.
We got enough information, so we've got no more excuses now to move forward.
Okay, so we'll hear more maybe next meeting?
Yeah, I think so. I think, yeah, because we're going to be, this next meeting will be three weeks away, I think. So we've got a little more time.
Yeah. Thank you. Winter road policy.
I think we should adopt it.
As printed.
Okay.
You swear like your look like God came out of the clouds and says.
Okay.
Well, I don't know why we're having discussion. Sheldon says it's done.
Well, I think we discussed it some.
First time I read it.
So I assume that's actually your motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm just voicing my opinion.
Is that, okay?
If everybody's in favor or if everybody is willing, I will make a motion that we accept the winter road policy and sprint it.
Winter spring.
And make it a policy.
I'll second it.
Spring.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the winter.
I did. Thank you.
Winter-spring road maintenance policy as printed. Is there any more discussion, questions?
I had a hard time finding the date of when winter starts and when spring starts, but didn't I see it there?
Do we have to write down when winter starts and when?
Overlaps each other.
I guess.
That's up to Chuck when winter starts.
That's why you wanted to know when the first snowfall is going to be today.
I just thought it was, I don't think I ever saw his written name was Chuck. I thought it was Charles, but it's Chuck, I guess, okay.
Okay, let's vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It passes.
Wouldn't vote against Sheldon.
Do we have to, we all have to sign this copy right here?
It's got to be posted for 30 days and then it has a bail period, so.
It's dated August though.
No, it's September.
Yours is.
Here's the official one right there.
The one to be signed is changed.
Thank you. New tax rate. Russell?
I gave you the tax rates at the last meeting so that you could look at them and understand them. Now we need to adopt them. We now have the official school rate, education rate. It is 5.2% higher than last year, which is 2.2% higher than they said they were going to go up. So hence our billing on the interim bills are shy. And we are going to see, the average home will see approximately a hundred to $200 increase in their second payment versus their first payment because of this. So I'll ask people that are listening to, ask your school board members to explain further why it went up so much and why the late surge of monies. But at this point, the 1.7779 is the homestead education rate.
And that's.
For the town of Westminster.
And that's the one we have to adopt?
That is the one you have to adopt.
I just was reading in the, this is sort of on the taxing thing, not really. But I was just reading that two districts that were combined were able to divorce themselves. And apparently the process for doing that is, is, is actually there. And I don't know if this is happening again. You know, one of the, the Act 46 was meant to lower the cost. And in fact, it hasn't lowered the cost, it's raised the cost. And it's, you know, so I know that we were having, I don't know if Russ, are any of the people that were involved in the.
I've been waiting my turn, but yes, Grafton has already started the process and they're getting Westminster involved and.
Okay, you mean to do this divorce?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
I believe that, that there's a lot of discussion about the legislature closing that loophole pretty quickly. So I would say the school boards would have to get on as fast as they can. It was Halifax and Reedsboro.
That's right.
Okay.
So I will need a formal motion and acceptance.
We have one?
I move to set the new tax rate, this is just a school tax rate.
It's the complete tax rate, do the bottom line, FY '21.
The new tax rate.
This one and this one.
Two dollars for homestead, 2.4864. For non-homestead, 2.3677.
Moved and seconded to adopt the FY '21 tax rate. 2.4864 for homestead, 2.3677 for non-homestead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I think we all oppose it.
Yeah.
But we have to. But we have to sign it. We don't have a choice.
Okay, thank you. And this is the copy that, we all sign this?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Okay, that takes care of unfinished business. Moving on to new business, the FY22 draft budget first look.
All this is, is a, an updated expense sheet for 17, 18, 19, 20 with our FY21 budget and starting a proposed FY22. So you have history. Numbers on FY22, of course, are just there and they're not meant to mean anything at this point. But it is a, this is the document that you need to keep with you for all of the budget discussions because this one is the one that you go back to, to see history.
But you do have numbers for FY22 in there.
Yes, I do, but they're just there. They're literally just, nothing is set in stone, of course.
Right. Well, I'd like to spend some time on our budget this year instead of waiting till the, you know, we often wait till the last minute. So I think it would be great if soon, whether it's the next meeting or the meeting after, we take perhaps like the first two pages and we go over them item by item, spend time doing that and then at the next meeting, and then if there are still numbers that we don't have there yet, we can go back and discuss those. That would be my, my very serious proposal because a lot of times we end up, you know, at the very last minute interrupted.
You're the chairman, you can order it.
Okay then. So will these, will, will these, so it might be worth it to do that. I mean, why would these numbers change on say, the first two, first two pages, say, up through the treasurers?
Why would they change?
Yeah, they would not, right?
They could with computer service contracts, they could with VLCT, who's definitely going to go up, Wyndham Regional will definitely go up, our insurance will definitely go up. So yeah, every one of those will, will be tweaked, I'm sure.
So I'm trying to figure out when is the best time to really start looking at this without waiting till the last minutes, but we'll have.
Like you just said, you're not going to get figures until some, some of them until November. So you can start by doing the ones that you, of course, can do.
Yeah. Okay. So why don't we do that?
That's typically what we try to do every year.
Yeah.
We give you the, we give you this document so you can start looking at it and then we start taking line item by line item.
Right.
As we have them.
Right.
And it does take time to get them.
Right, no, I understand that. I understand we'll have to go back, but I, I would like to start sooner rather than later, so.
Absolutely. That's why you've got the first draft.
So let's say for the next, at the next meeting, we spend time on the first two pages, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Russell looks good. You did it.
Yeah.
Too often I criticize the fact that we keep changing the system so I can't follow it. You've got everything back to where you're actually all going to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. FY21 equipment purchase, 10-wheeler dump.
We have a, an issue with what we have remaining in our equipment fund from last year to what we're, we're going to add to it from the voted 130,000 to what a new truck will cost us. The deficit is roughly $27,000. We have $527.55 left from last year, adding the $130,000 that we received from the vote at that meeting makes it 130,527.55. Our new 10-wheeler dump truck with plow has had, has been estimated at 157,527.55, leaving us a deficit of $27,000 plus or minus.
Is that something we need this year?
That is a piece of equipment that's in line to be traded and received.
Is it 10-wheeler for a 10-wheeler?
No. It's a six-wheeler to a 10-wheeler.
And that's why, that's why there's a difference in the price, you know? Is the fact that originally we were looking at six-wheeler for six-wheeler, but this is a six-wheeler for a 10-wheeler on it. And, you know, I do want to point out because there was people there talking about the big trucks and the little trucks and all that. And what Chuck is doing is what we see across the state is everybody's going to the larger truck because of less damage and they all, so a six-wheeler that he has right now has 20,000 fronts and 30,000 rears and 50,000 pounds it can carry on six tires. The tandems are 20 front and 46, which is 66,000 pounds it can carry. One's carrying six to seven yards, one's carrying 17 yards. But when you do the math, it's almost 2,000 pounds less per tire on the road with the, with the big truck because you're basically spreading the weight out, you got that many more tires, so. But the problem is sometimes people see the bigger truck coming and go, oh, it's a big truck, it's doing a lot of damage. No, it does less damage is why we're going to it. And like Chuck was saying the other day, you're making one trip instead of two trips, so you're not going across the road two or three times because you're going back to the shed to get material. So it is the way that what's going on is 90% of our sales the last four or five years have been for tandems, all the towns are switching because of, we're hauling further, we're hauling a product. And the hard part is when they go to trade, so next year they want to go to tandem for a tandem, it will run about $30,000 less than this year just because the tandem they're trading in costs is worth that much more. The trouble with the six-wheelers, they're not worth as much and that's what hurts. But we are, we're headed into where this is now it. They'll be, they'll have three of these tandems, they'll have two of the medium duty and two small, and that was, we all, that's what we think is the ideal fleet for what we're doing.
I guess I don't argue with the type of truck, mine is where are we going to get $27,000?
Yeah, it's a good question. I would, I guess.
I've been looking at it, what you would do to be very transparent is you'd overspend $27,000 in the equipment and between Chuck and I, we're going to be frugal with his, the remaining part of his budget to make sure that bottom line, that we covered it somehow. It's going to be tough, there's going to be some, some issues with it, but that's the only thing we can do at this point.
Have you ever done that before?
Not to this magnitude.
And would that jeopardize other equipment we might need this year to be paid for out of the equipment fund?
Absolutely. Down to zero.
Right, so there's.
So there would be no other equipment.
Right, exactly.
We're not up for anything else. This is a very poor piece of machinery, so.
I don't think, this is something we need to vote on, but.
I'll let you.
Yeah, Sheldon's doing a slow something over here.
I don't know. I, I understand the difference, I understand the weight on the roads and so forth, but boy, we buy another 10-wheeler in this town, we're going to, we're going to hear about it because there's an awful lot of taxpayers that don't want to see it. And I hear from a lot of them. And I, I get what you guys are saying, but I just can't see. Spending $27,000 that we don't have for something that maybe we need, maybe we don't need.
And do we need it this year?
To keep up with our purchases, yes.
Why do we need to keep up with the purchases?
We have enough machinery that if you skip a year, it'll be in dire straits.
They're trading every time the warranty runs out and what we decided last time, never own a truck that doesn't have warranty left on it.
So what you're saying is this truck that you would be.
This is, that's what.
Trading in, the warranty's ended.
It'll end, but it's almost out now, yeah. It's, yeah, that's right. It did end already. And that's what we learned last time, do not own the truck after. That's why we're, we're seeing the turnover of people. That's what they're doing. And as good thing is, it used to be a shorter warranty, now we lengthened the warranty so we can keep them a little bit longer, but it's full warranty, the new one he's getting the same thing, it's full warranty on it.
Train the six-wheeler.
Right, train the six-wheeler. It's actually, I got it sold to another town right now that just lost a truck and they're desperate. You cannot get any more equipment, it's sold out for the next year.
Maybe we could get.
So.
More money for it.
So let's say hypothetically you lose the transmission and this truck will get ready to trade at this point. You keep it another year and the transmission goes out. We're going to spend $30,000 on replacing the transmission on the truck if we're going to trade the following year. You going to be right back 40 hours right now?
Yes. And that's what they're purchasing, a seven-year warranty, that's as long as you can go. And there's a reason, they find it eighth, ninth, and 10th year, they have a tremendous amount of, it just gets older. The after treatment, this is one of the first, this is the first truck with a full after treatment, there's zero emissions coming out, but that after treatment system, it's a $30,000 to $40,000, but normally if you have to change the filter or you have to start putting money into, we, we see between $10,000 and $18,000 bills just to fix the after treatment. And that's really what's going, the engines last longer, really. It's like he says, the transmission and after treatment start to go. That's why a lot of towns don't want to own it after that period of time, you know?
Is this something we put out to bid?
No, you didn't.
Why don't we?
There's, nobody else would bid it. There is no equipment out there. You could.
We used to, but there's nobody that wants to bid on it anymore.
I've got letters from the previous truck we traded where they could go on. They wouldn't bid on it. We went to the Charlotte Woods.
We went to the Free End Dealers.
We went up to Carmon and asked SG Reed to bid and they wouldn't, they wouldn't support our truck.
Because they don't have these trucks?
Because they can't compete with a dealer that's in this town.
They, most of the dealers quit taking trades because they have, they have the liability. Our company is committed to Westminster and a few towns that we cut a deal a long time ago that we would take care of those towns. So what I was showing Russ was how much of a better deal you guys got compared to the exact same unit going to a different town on it, on it. So, but what happens is now they're, which they never used to do years ago, used to come in, bid and order the truck. If you bid and order the truck now, you're looking at, you'd be a year and a half to two years before you would see it. So what we went to is just pre-building trucks and he's getting the pre-built that's basically all the same. He just picks out what color and there's no difference. We ordered 24 of them at a time, so we get the state discount. And then when we went to him, he says, you can no longer order your truck, you'd have to take one, so if you don't take it, somebody else takes it. It's not the end of the world. The problem is getting rid of your trade, you know?
I run, we all, of course, through Herdley Hill and everything from Herdley Hill south to the shed, the Siam by Westminster West, and I use the same amount of fuel as Ben Bishore does on Piggery Road, Pine Banks Road, River Road. Actually, I mean, I'm saying that he uses more fuel, I'm sorry. He uses almost double because I can do that all in two load where it takes them six. So he's going to go back for everything he just said, track it all back up. So he uses more sand in the interior on those roads and fuel to do the same job.
I'm not quite.
No, no, I'm just trying to explain to you, no. So that, that's.
Right.
That's why, that's part of it.
You know, my, but my, a little bit of my concern besides $27,000 is that this is something we really should put out the bid, even if nobody would have bid on it. How difficult is it to write up the bid?
I, I did this for, when I first got here and I did it for the first three years.
Yeah.
And you get letters back. You have one, one letter, maybe two.
Yep.
From four, five, six.
Yep.
Companies and they, they just say that they're not going to bid.
Yeah, that's fine, that's easy.
The auditor now understands that by keeping with Western Star, you're not going to be able to put this out to bid. It is a specific item that is only going to be purchased locally from these dealers.
And when, yeah, when you say the auditor understands this is something he signed off on.
He always looks for our bidding, our procurement policy and making sure that I've gone through every step for all of this. When we get to the trucks, it's now known that we could not get other bids for the same truck that we're trying to keep the fleet all one brand, which is.
So what we're trying to do is keep the same transmission, the same end, the same tires. So before we used to stock, just the air filters for these trucks are like $120.
Yeah.
If I can just keep one on hand, instead of six different ones, you know, it's better. Tires, instead of having to have different tires for each truck, they're all the same tires, they take the same rings, the, you know, transmission filters are all the same and it saves us, taxpayers, a lot in the end.
Yeah.
Back in the records here, you know, when things were different, we, we did bid. The only complaint that I had was.
About 40% of the bill is equipment and he would only want that equipment and those equipment guys wouldn't bid. They would, this is what you get. So there's only two manufacturers that are left, Viking, which is what he's getting now, and MG, which runs about $15,000, $20,000 more. But they don't bid because they're territory protected. In other words, if you're in Vermont, you have to deal with them, you can't get a price from nobody else, that's what you're stuck with. With the dealership, some of the dealership, well, you can go get an international or you can go get a Kenworth. They all kind of got out of it because of the trades. They didn't want the trades. So they would come back and just send you a letter saying, it takes, it takes almost a day to put together a contract with the trade and all that, so that's one reason why they just don't. Honestly, we get them all the time, we're in Burlington or something and they ask and we just send a letter back to them and says, no, you know, go to your local dealer, just, we're not going to drive up there and try to, try to be in that area. So it is things that change a lot.
Yeah. And maybe on the extra, the $27,000, maybe we can consider maybe next year having a smaller.
It's next, that and next year if they do a tandem for a tandem, it's going to run about $40,000 less. That's what I'm saying, it's, this is the year you, you got to jump, that's what's hurting, you know?
I'll walk them around a little bit and we go out next year.
You say five to six thousand?
Just five to six thousand, wanting to make a difference.
It helps. It comes out of your budget. They'll take the tree without that plate.
Okay. We don't know yet, right? Yep, go ahead.
Nate Stoddard. I, all of that, Chuck's points are very valid, same tires, same air filter, all that, I get it. Craig's points are very valid. I don't disparage any of that, but we have a purchasing policy. Just because nobody sends a bid back, I don't think that means we don't send out for bid requests. We kind of heard the same thing with the town hall renovation, nobody else bid on it. So are we going to just stop going through our bid process just because we think nobody's going to bid on it? Or best practice says to continue with our purchasing policy that's in place?
Guess that was my question when I wondered how difficult it is to, to send a bid out. I mean, this sort of pro forma. Russ?
It's absolutely, I can send out the letters for the bid again with the specs and see what we get back.
And I, I guess if you want me to fall on board with this, I want to hear where we're going to come up with the 27. You're going to have to come up with better numbers than saying, well, we're going to script and save and we need to have some actual numbers for going to come up with the 27,000 to pay for this.
It's going to be from many items. It has to be. We can't just take it from, you know, wage lines, we have to take it from.
Then that's, then that's what you need to come up with because we need to come up with how we're going to come up with the twenty-seven thousand, I think.
I agree with you.
Shelby?
What's that?
I'd like to make a motion to a consideration of the ten-mill dump truck for one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars proposed with twenty-seven thousand dollars deficit that the proposal is that this be submitted per our policy for bids. Send out a bid by the town manager, authorized town manager, send out a full bid and plus. And also require the town manager to at least provide some basic schematic that the deficit would be foreclosed or made up.
And even if we, you know, if what Craig is saying is comes out, let's say next year, can for can, we're going to save forty thousand dollars. Maybe that's something that we've got to consider with this twenty-seven thousand dollar deficit this year. Is that we're going to more than make it up next year when we trade in if that happens in the bottom, doesn't bottom of the company between now and then. It's something else to consider. But I don't, I don't want to be taking twenty-seven thousand dollars just saying I will come up with it somehow. I agree.
A lot of the towns have asked right off the top of us is, we do, we call them, it's a guaranteed minimum buyback. It's easier on the schedule so that as you're buying this truck, we give them a schedule of what it's going to be worth in minimum seven years. So you're basically on a whole, like, on a budget, you know that this is what it's going to be. So we actually forecasted with the equipment that if you trade this truck back in, and so the tandems right now on this one here, we're, we're guaranteeing in seven years is worth about ninety to ninety-five thousand. What it entices is that they know that, okay, in seven years, the warranty runs out and we trade it in. And really, the next one costs less because you already got a hundred. And that's why these towns are all changing is the fact that someone run into their trucks until they were worth ten or fifteen. And then come up with two hundred thousand and it was really hurting. So they're all trying to get to a place where they're on that, that price curve. It's all about how much does it cost to own that truck per year? And that's what we're looking at. I'm always looking at our town. We have a lot of towns that are about thirty-six thousand per year to own because this is the way they are. We've been down around eighteen, nineteen and that's, that really is a low number.
Yeah.
Because of the traders. Because it's really, when you turn it over, it's how much did you get for the trade?
I don't think there's any, you know, somebody's questioning the value of.
No, if he sends it out right away, he would pay a couple of.
Yeah, I'm pretty much out of pro forma bid form, send it out.
Yeah, yes, it is, it gets, I know when they help a little bit, send, here, send them to this dealer, this is, and I didn't go in on what he did.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah, no, you can do it.
Yeah.
I'm not doubting your harassment whatsoever or anything.
No, the problem is you're not going to get from equipment. So there's seventy-two thousand dollars of that bill is the equipment. So you're not going to get it. It's, it is.
We have it right.
It is, that's what it is and that is it, you know what I'm saying? Because that's the equipment he wants and that's where he's done that. There's only one bike dealer in Vermont.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second on motion?
I repeated the motion.
That was a motion?
Uh, I believe Kevin.
I'm doing it again.
Okay, thank you.
Move that the bidding process, we move forward for the ten-mill dump truck. That the town manager, per our policy sends, immediately sends out bidding process for the, to solicit bids on the ten-mill dump truck. And also provide at least a blueprint for making up the deficit of the perceived twenty-seven thousand dollars shortfall that we may or may not have when we come to the decision to purchase the truck. How's that?
A basic schematic, that's what you said.
I apologize. Is that okay? Okay. Sorry, I started with a ten cent word.
If we get a second.
I can start you, sir.
Second advice, Sheldon Levy? Do we have more discussion on this? Questions?
No, I will point out if we're going to do this, yes, do it every year. Because now when you send it out, we call disclosure. They would also know what the disclosure is of what we just handed to you. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I've already, we've already turned in a testament, so.
Oh, I see what you mean. Oh, yeah, I got you.
And honestly, I'll just go back to the example. Okay, so as long as you know right up front that, okay, here it is, don't open it up till you open it up. And you might open up two letters and just say, oh, thank you or no thank you, but they're all on the same field.
Right.
When we see, when we see towns do that, when they come back, oh, we want to redo it, they're going like, okay, how are you going to do this? Everybody knows what everybody else did already.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm assuming because of the difference in the price here that back when we were scheduling this last year, we were looking at a budget last year. We were looking at replacing a six-wheeler for a six-wheeler.
That's.
Otherwise we wouldn't have this bunch of problems.
Exactly. It wasn't scheduled to be a six-wheeler. Exactly.
Where's that other budget?
Did we, did we vote on this? No, we did not. They made a vote. We're voting all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Delinked taxes to date.
In your package you have the final sheet of sixteen sixteen, just showing what we are against with delinked taxes. Two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we have just about a thousand dollars. Eighteen, nineteen, we have sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Nineteen, twenty, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. And then this year for first half of payments, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven forty-five. So this is a little higher than most of last year. And I will keep posted of how we're, we're making out. But right now we can, we can pay bills and do, do what we need to do to maintain town budgets.
Not completely out of, not completely unexpected considering the amount of people who are out of work. That's, that's correct for COVID-19.
Plus we have that working capital reserve fund of near fifty thousand.
That, yes.
Yes, none. Uh, driveway access refusal.
This is the first time we've ever, ever had this. The gentleman put a driveway in last winter and plowed it. And it was to service a new shed that he was creating. So we let it go, thinking it was going to be temporary and it was just going to be, look back in when, when his construction was done. That was not the case. Two road crew members, you being one of them, right? Went to him and discussed with him the idea that he needs a driveway permit and he needs to do some work on the driveway because it's at such an angle that it's not safe to, to get upon a class-two highway of Westminster Heights Road. So I sent him a letter stating that, and attached, of course, one of our access permits. It is a hundred dollars and thought that that would be the end of it. Time, a lot of time went by trying to give him as much time as he could need to get it. And he didn't still, no word, no call or anything. They talked to him again and he said he was going to, going to, going to, but never did. So I sent him a second letter. And now we're at a point where it's going to be into another winter where he is going to be plowing into that section again. And so I've given this to legal counsel. We're going to send him this letter that you've got in your packets. I'm sorry, it was external and you just sent it to me this afternoon late. Just explaining the situation and how the process goes when someone doesn't file a hundred dollar permit. And it'll be up to you folks to how far you want to bring this. But this is the first look that I've had also. Like I said, it's never, never happened before. Everybody's typically, you know, jumped on board. Don't worry, don't worry, deal. Very, very easy to get along with. All you have to do is follow and we'll be there. So anyway, long story short, it'll be, it'll come up again if he doesn't inform. But we will be filling this out and sending it with your permission, which I will need your permission.
So we need a motion for that?
Well, I can go on a date.
Excuse me?
Do you want the date or not?
I do, on or before, yeah?
On before November first, twenty-nine, I would think. It's been a month.
Okay, so you've scheduled right, you've locked on before November first, okay?
And if it's not done with, then I would direct the town to put a couple of good-sized cement blocks, barriers in the middle of the road and move on for this year.
Is that your motion?
Yeah. No, it, it just does say we will curate the road.
Right.
So it's already there. Most thanks.
So I'm moving the motion to write the letter.
This is from Larry. And I always got it just as a tough. This is what I'm doing.
We're trying, we're trying to, I mean, the motion essentially is that.
We're receiving, we're receiving a letter, you're putting November first on.
Yes. Who's that?
Move second, uh?
Moved by Sheldon, second for Craig. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Full harness agreement, this car will be key to her.
I brought you, almost a year ago now, a memory that we had with the old windmill that we were going to add an antenna to it because it's broke down and it's just sitting there. It hides the antenna work very, very nicely. It still looks like a, a windmill. But it services Chuck and the road crew getting over the hill with radio contact, but also fire department and Wyndham County Sheriff.
This is off Pat's road, right?
This is off of Pat's road.
Millican Bridge.
Millican Bridge, right. And Chris asked me a while ago, and I dropped the ball, to create a whole harness agreement for just his liability of, of being free from liability of having the tower there, having the antenna there, I should say. And so Larry's drafting it as we speak. I'll have a copy for you to look at and sign, but it is in the process. And it has worked out extremely well to get us up over that hill with the radio contact. Much safer.
Any more discussion about that? Manager's report.
I have a few things. We have continued use of Windmill Hill Road Class Four from a few folks that refused to look at the signs. But the good news is, is just this afternoon, I got a letter from Emily Richards. And she wrote, I am forwarding this response from back country discovery group folks that I received yesterday afternoon. It confirmed my notion that BDR has stepped up very strongly to help stop the motorcycle traffic on Windmill Hill Road after receiving my second email this past week. I do applaud them for the action that they have taken. It is clearly apparent that they want to keep their journals open and available to their ridership in respect to the town's regulations and requests of local residents. BDR's social media communication has obviously struck a chord as I have not heard or seen motorcycles down the road since last Saturday. Yay. What they've done is they've put in their process these signs. And they even have one specifically for Windmill Hill Road. They actually showed them a detour to, to not use what we've asked them not to use and showed them how to get around it. So these have been forwarded to, to the whole organization. And there's four different areas that they have stopped them from usage. And they're taking this very seriously, which is awesome. So I didn't have this information until this afternoon or I probably would have, you know, given you all a couple of copies of these because these are pretty interesting stuff. But it is a work in progress and it seems to be working pretty well.
Is Emily Richards?
M. Richards, yes, E.M.
That's not a stack one words. One, no.
I don't know. I don't know. Honestly, I don't know. The Pine Banks Land deal fell through yet again, so it is back on the market. It's going to be advertised again in the Gazette. Explanation was needed funds elsewhere. So it gets sold yet. Davidson Hill property that we picked up and cleaned up at tax sale, that's our borrowed property. We have right now seven thousand four hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents into the cleanup and demolition of, of that acreage. We will be back in touch with, with a price of what we feel is fair market value. And we do have three or four people that are interested in, in looking at it, but it has to be reasonable.
What did you demolish?
Excuse me?
What did you demolish?
A mobile home.
Oh, you said the acreage, so I didn't understand that.
Yeah, well, the acreage was, the cleanup was trash thrown throughout the woods that Chuck and the guys had to go into the woods and pick out by hand. I mean, it was riddled in there. I sent you, like, this was probably two years ago now, but you've got pictures of trash just thrown through the woods.
My, my compliments to the town too, because I was up there yesterday. You did a nice job on those, good. Thank you.
Just want to mention again, we do have still cloth masks available for, for taxpayers. I still have quite a few, so please come in if you're interested. School bus in the town forest update. The buses has been removed, but a little bit of trash has been left. Chuck has gone up and looked at it. I'd like at least a little bit of, of help in deciding if we're going to go clean it up and try to get money back from them? Or are we just going to clean it up? What are you, what's your pleasure? Something, something has to be done with the winter.
Are we, what are you talking about, like McDonald's bags or old?
There's a, there's a fifty-five gallon drum that they were burning in. There was, I mean.
There was an old wood stove, this was a scrap, some furniture, some.
From what it was, it's got to be a hundred percent better. Because it was, it was rabbit cages and, and wood for jacking up the bus. All that must be gone now.
Was that the same bus that's still on that road, just currently?
No.
Turned out to be a whole one?
That's a different one. That's the short bus.
Well, I went down there a couple of weeks ago to look at some work at Penns. And myself and another contractor were literally chased out of that road by some, I don't know, a former worker that came from Chantyville there on the left, literally on the bumper, all the way down the road. You know what, I don't know who it was, I have no idea, but that neighborhood.
It's an inter, interesting neighborhood.
So what are you thinking, allocating some money from what would it cost, what would it be?
It isn't going to cost much. But so the stove will put their scraps to apply to the trap. We have a big thirty-yard dumpster that we get for such occasions. All year. We get rid of it every spring, so, you know, probably a few hundred dollars to help.
Yeah.
I think it's worth it. Isn't, isn't this all a local? Didn't this all start locally? A local family, but the, the individual was not local.
There's no modern air, but.
And thank God it's been all there.
I think that you should write a letter to the local people and request them finishing the cleanup of the town forest within the next few. I mean, if they don't do it, they don't do it, but I. I mean, if they don't do it, they don't do it, but we, you know, we should request for them to finish cleaning it up.
I know a brother is the one who took it upon himself to get most of that junk out of there. The steel beams, the wood, the rabbit cages. I know he did a ton of work just because he felt so bad about it. I haven't seen it to what's left versus what he, what was left when she first pulled the bus out, but.
This is our, this is our town forest.
It's exactly.
Basically, one of the few perks that we have within the town, so.
There's no signs on that road you can see that it is.
That it's a town forest now.
Um, there's signs, there's signal light that the bridge is out.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you got there right now, there's two signs, there's a number going up the hill to Pendleton or the number.
Who would think it's a drive?
You would think it's a drive?
Yes.
Let's say the conservation commission, like I was talking about, making trails and.
And they have the.
No, trails there, but it isn't well marked at all.
Well, maybe we should direct them to market as well. I don't know, that's just my thought that.
No sign.
We shouldn't be spending money on probably a big. As I said, if they don't, if they don't do it, then we can spend the money to do it for the town forest, but.
Okay.
Why shouldn't we spend it if we don't have to?
Spend a lot. Can't hurt. I'm also in the process of creating an emergency help order for the property of William Lyons. Mr. Lyons passed away in a. A shanty of sorts. In July, pardon, July and left a substantial mess. There is no next to kin nor. Nor will, so this will be entomated for a long time. State will eventually own the land and the. Large account that Mr. Lyons had in a bank. And so Larry again is helping me create an emergency help order. To send it to the state of Vermont, demanding that we get the resources to clean up the the mess. And when I say it's a mess, it is. It's all there, it's a mess. He wasn't found for three weeks. And it was, the fire department did a fantastic job helping the coroner remove the body. And we do have a clean bill to go in there. The coroner did deem it as natural causes, so the site is clean as legally and it needs to be cleaned up. It cannot be like the way it is. Where we are awaiting the cooler weather, but it does still.
A good for us.
Weeks. Yeah. So anyway, that's just a heads up.
Nice, thank you. Boards and commissions?
I have nothing to report.
Other business?
This is nothing to worry about. Hopefully, we're just talking about going out.
They, our company came in and announced that they purchased Freightliner New Hampshire, which is, it's a great company we're working for now. But there, there's that many more stores that won't build a bid because they're all owned by the same people. Reason why I'm saying this, it's it's a great move for us. It is going to add much more people to our area and into employment and we're looking forward to it. But basically, we just added some more stores. So we're basically the largest dealership network in, own in the East Coast now, so.
Congratulations.
You sure still haven't heard from Sevins.
Yeah, that was my, yeah, that was my point. It was like, you think we'll ever get anybody to come in and actually help us recruit, you know? But they did announce, which was nice, I liked that they're offering all these other employees to move. They they get to choose wherever they want to go. So we already had four different families move here because they wanted to live in Vermont, New Hampshire area. They came up from down in Mass, so now we expect the same thing they're offering. If you work in our network already, you can actually move to any one of the stores for the same pay, the same opportunity. Yeah, it is, it really is a good, good company, but we're unique. We do a lot of things in Westminster that our whole network doesn't. But we're the only one with a body shop, as you know, and stuff like that, so they're going to get heavier and heavier into that. So, yeah, and we took so far, three kids out of Bellas Falls and two out of Springfield, sent them to our school because they have their own college. And now they're back working for our dealership and they're really excellent, excellent techs and employees. Really is good to see what we're doing. Yeah, someday, maybe we'll get somebody to come and help recruit.
Good news, Craig.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Date of next meeting, October fourteenth, six thirty P M. Do we want to meet back here again? Is this working for everyone?
Sure.
Sound and conference here.
Okay. Motion to adjourn from anyone?
So moved.
Second.
Moved the second, we adjourn, all in favor? Aye opposed. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for coming.